Spent the entire day with him.
The light's still green. Oh, it's up here? Oh, all right, okay.
It was just the board was in the van. It was great.
Well, I appreciate you letting me know. I don't have eyes everywhere.
Right.
No time for that, Laura.
Even if he seems little. Absolutely, I get a lot, but yeah, absolutely, always.
I gotta say something to you real quick.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. We're calling the meeting for the budget hearing together. And I will read through the budget message that I read at our last meeting. Dear citizens and Board of Counsel, City Administration met with Finance Committee of Council to review this proposed budget and submitted a favorable report, which recommends adoption by this Board of Counsel. The fiscal year 2526 is a continuation of the city's planned projects that have been well thought out and implemented. With the completion of the Tower Park Playground in 2024, we are moving forward with all large projects to improve the citizen experience throughout a wonderful town. Outside of larger projects, this year's budget also includes the annual street resurfacing program, scheduled vehicle and equipment replacement, and wage increases for city staff. General Fund. The fiscal year 2526 budget covers all the necessary operating expenses for the city, from water and sanitation to copy paper. The fiscal year 2526 general fund expenses are projected to exceed revenues after transfers by $7,539,751. This budget has $8,146,227 of budgeted capital projects will be funded by our reserve fund balance. Our projected general fund operating revenues total $16,543,773, a 3.2% increase over fiscal year 2425, based on keeping the tax rate the same this year for budgeting purposes. General fund operating expenditures total $16,530,798, a 12% increase over fiscal year 2425. This increase is primarily due to wage increases, health insurance increases, and the addition of three new full-time positions, two green space laborers and a facilities custodian. As in years past, there is not much discretionary spending. Although for budget planning purposes, we kept the tax rate revenue the same this year. This is a needed discussion in coming months with City Council. The city has elected to spend or allocate over $10 million of our reserve funds in the past two years. This was specifically for two large community projects, the Tower Park Playground and the completion of the Midway Streetscape. The city of Fort Thomas has maintained a healthy reserve balance in the past years. So the mayor and staff will present information to support a discussion about whether to consider a tax increase this year and in future years. It's critical to discuss our financial plan moving forward to ensure the city is able to support and enhance operations in the future, along with continuing to improve the city by supporting the services and enjoyment of our citizens. Other Funds. The remaining city funds cover a variety of city operations and projects. The KDOT Road Fund houses the city's street resurfacing program and also larger road projects like the stabilization of Main Avenue. There are no significant changes within the CBD Waste or the Health Insurance Fund. Summary. The fiscal year 2526 budget continues the city's focus on maintaining a high level of both services and amenities to our citizens. We have been very intentional with our spending to continuously improve our city parks, infrastructure, and green space through a combination of grants, revenues, and reserves. The city of Fort Thomas has long been a great place to live and work, and we strive to keep it that way. Respectfully submitted, Eric Haas, Mayor. So now, open the floor. Any discussion from Council?
I did have one thing to point out. So compared to the original 2024 to '25, this increased budget was the 3%. But if you take out the... And what this is really talking about is the pension spiking. So the original 2425 budget, the pension was originally... Expense for like, say, the police department was $1 million, which it had been close to in past years. The fire department was originally $881,000, but with the pension spiking, the amendment was for $1.22 million. So the total of those two is $773,000. And of that $773,000, when you look at the original budget of 2425 compared to the amended, there's not the $773,000 of difference. Where was the... What did we not spend out of the original budget to create the lesser difference in the amended? Did anybody follow?
I am. So you're saying that basically that number, $700,000, $800,000, has not been consumed somewhere else?
So it isn't really...
If I get it at the end.
Like, I wouldn't consider it part of the operating budget, but it is in the operating budget. So would you...
Also, you were saying it should just come out from that?
Well, like, it's... I mean, it's in the operating budget, so it doesn't really give you an accurate description of what an increase was or wasn't, you know, compared to previous years. So it adds a huge expense. So, yeah, it looks like we're only spending a little bit more, but we're actually spending $773,000 that we didn't even plan to. So another... Like, part B of the question is, when we have... Has that money been already been paid?
Yes. Well, let's see. Let me see when we...
I'm just curious about... This is really for my information.
Yeah, it'll be...
The amended process.
Yeah.
When... So when we vote on a budget and then it's amended, what is the voting process on the amended budget? Like, approving it, I should say.
I don't think it has. I just looked at this. This was a letter that was sent out in December. So I don't know if we're waiting on that or not. I'll have to double check. I know we talked about that, but I didn't look to see when we actually expended that.
Andy, is your question, don't we... Is it about us having to amend it first before it can be spent?
Well, that was part B, yes, of my question. Part A of the question was, well, let's call it A.1. Was... Was... Should it be... Like, why is it in the operating budget?
It's there because that's where the expense is. It's in the pension. It's in CRS pension. So that's why it's expended out of there. It just should have been expended out of '21, when the initial bill was sent.
So the bill was... And that's when the bill was enacted, correct? In July '21? So...
Well, sometime in '21. I don't know if it was July.
So, and anything... Like, this isn't going to happen again.
Correct.
So this will be a one-time thing. So then, looking at the... Like, the... Villa Hills sued the state over the similar thing that they did with this. And then, like, afterwards, the general... Who was this? The Supreme Court of Kentucky talked about how any increases in pay over 10% over five fiscal years, depending on the timing of the earnings and the date of the employee's retirement, the cost of an identified increase over 10% in any... And this is the new part of the law. In any one or more five fiscal years, must be assessed against the employer, which the city is. So when we look at raises in departments now, or since 2021, so anything over 10% in the pension part of everything will be assessed to the city? That's how I read it.
I think 10% is the overtime. A raise or a... I think I read it as a raise or a promotion.
Yeah. Yeah, a promotion supersedes it, but I had to look...
You're not supposed to work more than... And the new law is you're not supposed to work more than 10% of your allotted salary. Or it's considered spiking.
It's been a few years since I've read that law because it changed probably five years ago to eliminate that from happening anymore.
The rolling doesn't talk about overtime. It just talks about the earnings.
Well, that is the earnings. It's the 10% over the... If you look at...
Yeah, that's what I mean.
The law is about raises.
Right.
I don't think it's about earnings. I think it's about raises. What you're saying is about raises. What you're talking about is... The actual pension is not from raises. The actual pension is from working...
It's your earnings.
Earnings. So you're talking about two different things here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is the amount we're talking about, is that a... I think the law changed in 2018 or something like that, around there. Was it... Is that a clawback from prior to that date?
This happened before I got here. It was '21. And I know I looked at it last year. It was the first time I knew about it, maybe '23. But I'd have to look.
The law went into effect July 1, 2013. But the... All of the lawsuits and all that from the state is what happened in '21. So they were looking at things since 2013. Is that right?
It was. It was my attention. I'm not sure.
I'd have to look into more into that, what you're talking about.
I just don't want us to... Like, thinking about the budget. If you look at where we are in the trajectory of the increases in expenses and the increases in revenue, it's... The trajectory is...
We can... Yeah, we can look at...
And we can't... I think we're financially sound, and I think we're safe where we are. I also understand that, you know, revenues are there for reasons of this. I get all that. But I just want us to make sure that our trajectory is laid out to where we have a program for, A, capital budget projects 20 years out, 10 years. And just have an understanding of the reserve balance to where everything...
And that's what we're going to discuss here in the...
Sorry, this is for the public comment, and I'm eating up all the time. I'm sorry. But that's, you know, my two cents about that.
Yeah, and that's what we just... We're talking about. It's what we're going to discuss with Finance Committee, is to lay out our, you know, what we're wanting to do in the next 20, 30 years. Because I've been working on a 10- to 20-year vehicle. I've got a good 10-year vehicle plan, but we really need to push that out to 20 because of like ladder trucks and larger stuff. But that would give us a good idea, based on that, of what reserves need to be. Because we're not buying a ladder truck every year, but every 20 years, we have to make sure we have enough. The next one's probably going to be closer to a million.
Should we allow for public speaking and address this issue when we get to the first reading? So that we don't kind of clone... Unless you guys...
We got time. I mean, we can roll in.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Yeah, I just want to make sure. Because I was reading about this, and it says, "During the 2017 regular session of the General Assembly, Senate Bill 104 was enacted creating new pension spiking rules for members retiring on or after January 1, 2018." So for retirement dates of July 1, 2021 and after, the 10% cap on that, you know. So my question is, you know, Andy brought this to my attention earlier, that we had to be getting some kind of letters from the state about this, right? And then are... We have... I'm sure we have a system in place where there's a checks and balances of when someone's working, and they're working extra time. And pension spiking's been around for a long time, right? So they were trying to get a handle on this. That this was going on, and no one caught on to it, and then we got fined and ignored it for years? How anyone still has their job that was a part of this? This is $700,000. You know, I mean, this isn't paying a credit card bill late. Like, everybody, every department... Every department should have known that they weren't allowed to do this, period. And then if an employee was working overtime, then they should have said, hey, you're pushing it. We're going to get fined. You're in trouble. And then whoever pays the bill should have said the same thing. So what happened? That we got fined $700-plus thousand.
That wasn't the fine. That was just the pension.
Paying it back. Which we shouldn't have had to do that because...
I don't think that's true. I think... I mean, because this was... I've been dealing with this for a long time, but I just don't remember... I don't remember... Well, why I don't remember this because I wasn't here. But I forget what the law changed that required that. So I'll have to dig. I mean, this is a little bit different. We all got... I think Council got packets a couple of months ago about this because we've been trying to...
Did you get a packet?
Didn't this all come in an envelope? I thought it came to everybody. Maybe not.
Did you guys... Did you get a packet?
But I can... But I'll dig into this and provide... Because I just am not ready to talk about that. And we're talking about two different things here, too.
I think someone should... I personally think that if we were getting letters and this was being ignored, and it was being allowed, whether or not it's a fine...
It's not that it was ignored. We've been trying to negotiate it down.
We're negotiating it down because it was a problem that we allowed to happen.
No, the history behind this, and I don't remember all the details, but... And I don't know how many years ago this was. The pension was underfunded in the state. And they were coming to all the cities and saying, okay, you've been paying this much. Now you've got to pay this much. And all the cities are going, oh, my God, we can't do this. We can't afford it. We budgeted for it. We tried to hold the money aside as if we were going to have to pay the full amount. The state gave reprieve to everybody, so we didn't have to pay that amount. So I'm not exactly sure of the details behind it, but that has been going on for years.
Yeah, I think that might be different, too.
It's confusing as...
For what you're talking about, let me dig into that, and then I'll get more details.
I personally like to make a motion to do a full investigation on this. I'd like to make a motion to do a full investigation.
Well, the audit will bring that out.
I want a thorough investigation done on this, and I want to know who was behind it and how it happened. And I want to know every letter that was sent here, why and from. This isn't a late charge on a credit card fee. This is $700,000 we shouldn't have had to pay back because we allowed them to abuse the system, and we all knew it. It's no joke. I mean, how's that... I mean, that's...
I don't think it's something we shouldn't have paid back. I'm just going to...
It's something we shouldn't have...
Because I've dealt with spiking before. It's not like it's something that's flagrant malicious. This is something that was a period of time in the state that was happening.
It was allowed to, but then we knew at a certain point it had to stop, and we still continued to allow it.
So let me get the initial stuff here. We can go to that level if you want. Let me get the details because I'm not providing any details right now because I wasn't ready for this. This was brought up to me right now. So...
Andy, Andy, fire it up.
And this happened before I got here, so...
I mean, we should have known. So I understand that you say that, but when I... When you look at this, and there's a $400,000 difference in both the fire and police, and it's on the amended returns, it seems to me like we did the amended returns for this, to allow you to have the funds to pay this. Fine. And we didn't talk about this at all during the Finance Committee meeting. And that scares me, that we talked about we had to amend our budget because we had some more parks and some more businesses. But this is literally asking us for $700,000 to pay a fine so that you could negotiate down a penalty that we were having with the state. Because you can't write the check unless we give you the money. So I feel like this was a little bit of a sleight of hand.
I think the way I read this is that... And the reason why all of the cities that have sued the state have lost, the Supreme Court has, I think, judged for the pension program every single time, I believe, is that when this went into effect in July of 2013, it had to have been that sometime after 2013, people were, you know, eating up the overtime to inflate their pay. And that's what you weren't allowed to do. So when the state went back and looked at everything, they... Oh, well, you did this, this amount. So I think it's a matter of look back to see on... Well, what, you know, what years or what... You know, what... Where is the actual root of our charge? And I don't know that it's a fine. I don't know anything about it. But it seems to be that it's...
Well, he said we had to negotiate down a fine. That's all we paid it off.
It's a charge... Well, there could have been a fine included.
Right, it was included.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, is there... The charge has to do with what the state perceives as money we didn't send, you know, from an actuary's perspective, to pay the individual pensions. Right?
No, I think we're having to re... What they're asking for is us to reimburse them the money that we contributed, right? So we contributed so much...
No, I think they're asking to pay the money that we didn't contribute.
No, I think it's the money that they contributed because we spiked.
Right.
So that's the difference. So they're asking us to pay them back for the money they contributed to our pension plan for the people we allowed to spike.
Some say it's a clawback.
It's a clawback.
I just... I'm curious. I'd like to know what their calculation, whatever that number is, how they... What's the calculation over what number of years? I mean, is it from five years? Is that 750-ish, whatever the number is? Does it represent five years? Or is it, you know, 10 years? Or what are we...
I'll have to give it to you.
Yeah, I mean, we should know who retired in the last 10 years, right? So... And how much...
Because I've just been looking at the letters from the state, so I'll have to get... Dig into the... What happened before that.
I mean, we should know who retired and who did it and who was in charge of their payroll, who allowed them to do it, and then who wrote the checks? I mean, am I wrong here to think that this is a problem?
Let's let Matt look into it and get the information for us, and we can go from there.
Should we make a motion to have it done?
He's already offered to look into it.
A motion is a lot stronger than an offer. And I'm tired of everybody ignoring what we're doing.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we look into this to find out exactly who was involved in this, from the person who... From the person who got the money to the person who was supposed to sign off on the checks, to all the letters and where they came from, and how this evolved to this, from every detail, from every single part of this. And I'd like it in two months.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I would like to understand this all better. Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, I'd like to know every detail of who was involved in this and why it happened and how it got past us.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely want to see...
This isn't a late credit card.
For general lack of knowledge of a lot of this, I need to understand, so...
Would you like to add anything to the motion?
Well, just... My primary... Well, secondary concern, I guess, but the primary one is that, you know, what's in place that it doesn't happen again? You know, as we look into it. I just, you know, I haven't seen anything around that, so that's... You know, we don't want to repeat.
I mean, Matt, I would like, just for general knowledge of this, like, just the process, because I don't know what that process looks like. So if that's going to help us understand it all, then yes, absolutely. I would like to...
Well, I think it also helps us find why we did it. If there has to be positions eliminated because of it, it costs us $700,000. I don't know any of you guys, but if somebody costs me... If someone steals from me, they get fired. Why don't we start with what happened? And then we can figure that out. If we're going to look into it, let's look into it. Eric seconded it. So I think we vote?
I didn't hear a second.
I second.
I'm sorry. Is there further discussion?
No, I would just say that we need to be very careful before we make accusations to get the information. That's all there is to it. And I think that's really important.
These are fines that were happened on our watch.
I don't think this is accusations or anything. I think this is fact-finding.
That's fine. That's fine. But to say that somebody needs to lose their job is an accusation. That it doesn't exist right now.
It does. Because something happened that caused us to get fined and pay back $800,000, period.
I think we all wanted to get to the bottom of it and get the information. So if you feel like it needs a motion to do that, when Matt said he'd do it anyway, that's fine. We can agree to the motion.
I'd like it done in 60 days.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to move on. If there's... We've got... People have signed up. If you want... If you've signed up for, particularly for the budget hearing, you're welcome to come up, Steph Chalk.
I wasn't planning on talking about this, but just as an FYI, a lot goes into the pension calculations. And the age, the death, the turnover, years of service, and rehires should all be carried by the actuary. So that should be on your actuarial reports. Forfeitures, actuarial assumptions, fixed income rates assumed, and investment returns also go into that calculation. So you've got a boatload of moving parts with that. You also have the union rules, and you have the state rules. So those... Obviously, those are legal issues from the document standpoint. And was it fully funded, overfunded, or underfunded? So I wasn't planning on talking about that, but that's where you go to look for that stuff. So I wasn't planning on talking about that, but that's, that's where you go to look for that stuff. I'm not really going to talk a lot about the numbers right now. What I've, what I've got to talk about is what I've observed and what we've experienced. And looking at the numbers is very difficult because there's been multiple versions. Multiple versions have been there because things are in flux as, as, and then need to be ironed out. So that's not a big surprise. But there's, becomes a story around what I, I've looked at and see what's going on. The numbers purely are kind of confusing, inconsistent, contradictory, perplexing, and puzzling. And again, for the reason, for that reason, I'm going to be focusing on the narrative. So on tonight's agenda, this is listed as the, um, the, the budget is listed as the first reading, but we had a first reading, I thought, at the last meeting. So is this the second first reading?
Yes, it's, I just went ahead and put the first readings on again because we have a budget here.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll change the minutes, I would assume, from, okay. Okay, um, that's great. Some clarifications. How much do we owe to South Bank? Just a, well, broad, I'm just curious.
How much do we owe them?
Yeah.
Nothing right now.
Oh, I thought there was an obligation that we had to them.
We stopped paying them, I believe.
Yeah, we, we've stopped paying them at the moment.
Well, that, is, that's okay?
It's not that, yeah, because we don't have an obligation. I've been negotiating with South Bank for the last few years on a, a reasonable amount.
Okay. And then what is the estimated cost of the bathrooms, showers, and partitions that we're looking at at the Armory? What's the estimated cost of that?
You mean, of doing an Armory upgrade? We, we put in, I think we talked about 1.2 million, but until we get a, a master plan, I mean, we're, we really don't know.
And is that?
We haven't put any money in for that. We've just discussed the, it's a future project that we've talked about.
Okay. And is that, yeah, but you're going to, you talked about approving your future projects.
Not that one.
In what?
No, 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 no. That, that one isn't even planned or anything.
Okay. And is that in alignment with our comprehensive plan to make those changes to the Armory?
I don't know.
Wouldn't that make sense to know that? I mean, if we're going to allocate a million plus?
We haven't allocated yet. I mean, that's just something that we've talked, that's just been discussion of it.
Okay. So we, as I see it, we have a new auditor, we have a new accounting system. We kind of have a, an out-of-balance condition that we're dealing with, and we're, have been spending and depleting our reserves at a high rate. So, um, for this point, I think that's all I have to talk about. But I don't, personally don't have confidence that a new auditor and a new accounting system are going to cure everything that ails us right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joan?
Joan Ferris, 66 Bernie Lane. Just to confirm, Matt, you said tonight will be the first reading, after this public hearing, the first reading of the budget.
Yeah, we're going to do another first reading.
Okay, thank you. The city budget mention, city budget message signed by the chief administrative officer, as well as the mayor, and intended to serve as a summary of the more detailed budget, clearly points out, was read tonight, that the FY 2526 general fund expenses are projected to exceed revenues by $7,539,751. Let me paraphrase that. If approved, this budget will allow our city to spend $7,539,751, more than it will be taking in, in one year. Digest those words while you listen to the next sentence in the city budget message. This budget has $8,146,227 of budgeted capital projects, which will be funded by our reserve fund balance. Is there anyone seated at these tables who can justify spending 7.5 million largely to create a reserve while at the same time you're already budgeting ways to spend that reserve? Historically, financially, and logically, a reserve is intended for cases where you might fall on hard times. Never, never, never should a city, or a business, or a family for that matter, build a reserve explicitly to spend it on elective projects just for the fun of it. I understand the city staff is pending, is spending taxpayer money and very little of their own money, and that taxpayer is much, tax, taxpayer money is much easier to spend, but that doesn't make it right. At last month's council meeting, a council member rightly and ethically pointed out that we are on a very bad trajectory financially by dipping into the city's emergency reserve to fund elective projects. This is just wrong. It is bad management of taxpayer money. If this budget is approved, you are putting Fort Thomas on a path to financial ruin. And please don't justify it with, oh, well, we'll just raise everyone's taxes. Just be, have, you have the power, doesn't mean that you should abuse it. Thank you.
Matt? I think there's some clarification.
I actually could, because I, I think you were referencing me about the, so the, just to address what you said, because either I misspoke or you, you misheard me. So the, there's two different things here. What I was talking about, the trajectory of expenses going up compared to our revenues, is all about the operating part of the city. So our reserve fund is around, you know, 100% of what our yearly operating budget is. The Federal Reserve of Boston did a huge study about the whole country on what a reserve should be. They put it at 15 to 27%. And that's taking in to account cities that have tornadoes and hurricanes and all kinds of stuff like that. So I think that having our reserve, when we don't really have any debt, if you consider the fact that we have a restricted reserve of the same amount as our debt, which is another topic that I actually wanted to bring up, just on what, what we're getting in interest on the investment compared to what the debt is and that kind of an outlook. But as far as, would it be better just to pay it off? But back to my point, it, we don't need to have 100% of our, of what our operating budget is and reserves. If there's a handful of projects that beautify the city, I think it's a good idea.
And we'd still be at six months.
And we're still at, and we're, even after spending all this money, we're still at six months. I think we're still high. I think the number should be four months.
I know. Oh, my gosh, I can't tell you the month. Joe Ewald said, but our surplus is getting too big. This is probably a year ago. We need to spend that down. So we just sort of found things to spend it. I, in my opinion, a really good way to spend that, perhaps a tax reduction? Instead of saying we're going to keep it, maybe increase it, get that surplus. I can tell you right now, comparing my fiscal year now for me, compared to my fiscal year in 1975 when our first child was born, I didn't have any room to fill up the surplus. And now that I have a surplus, I can spend it like nobody's business. I can, I can live within any budget. And man, I can spend stuff that the money's just sitting there on the counter. And I feel that that's something that, it happens. And I was talking with someone who's a statistician, degrees in statistics. And I said, can you come up with a, a number of how long will it be that you're? I, I don't think I misunderstood you. Maybe I related incorrectly tonight, but if our expenses are higher than our income, when is that going to be?
Yeah, and I totally agree with you, and I think that's what, that's what we need to focus on near term, on what does that look like next year? Like, you know, obviously, you can't continue to go on that trajectory. You just can't.
That was, that's what I asked you to do.
I'll give you a little bit of history, what's going on in the city. And back when Jeff Hurley Warren was the, um, the CAO, we would do a 20-year projection. And that was extremely helpful. Now, we don't have to go. Expenses versus revenues of what plans for the city, just the things we're talking about, what we need to do, which is what was in the budget message, that we're going to do that review. We have a couple of hiccups that have occurred. One thing was the whole COVID fiasco, which gave us a whole bunch of extra money that was eligible for certain projects which we used. We also, quite honestly, have a little bit of a problem with, Matt is relatively new, and, and Joe Ewald has had medical issues, and so it's been a little bit difficult pulling this, all this information together. All these are valid things that need to be looked at. But the budget message is nothing more than just a general description of what we're talking about with this year's budget. And again, budgets are, a budget is a budget. We had a, a first reading for the budget amendment last month, or last meeting. And the budget amendment normally just happens about the same time each year. That brings the last year's budget in line with more actual figures, based on the fact that, okay, we've spent most of the money this year. That's, the audit is the issue that we're waiting for, that will give us the clear direction on where all the money's gone, and that will give us more information for us to move forward with this plan on where we need to go in the future and to balance all these things out. So let's move ahead.
Well, I'd like to talk for real quick here, because I, I think she mentioned the tax reduction. And I would love that, I really would. I think we've done a great job. I think since I've been on council, we haven't raised taxes three times. And I believe since they were allowed to in the late 70s, early 80s, they've raised taxes maximum ever since then. And as Andy pointed out, um, at the last meeting, at this meeting, if we continue on our trajectory, especially under salaries and expenses, we will be in the red next year. That's just on the revenue that we take in in order to cover our actual bills. So I think that there's going to be some discussion, if there hasn't about ready, about how to streamline things so that we can get control of that, you know, so that we can't, we don't have to raise taxes. And how do we draw revenue in so that it's not a burden on the taxpayer and keep the city the way it is, the way everybody likes it? You know, we have three amazing parks we have to pay for, we have Flea in the Fort, we have the, uh, Farmer's Market, Merchants of Music, the July 4th Parade. These all cost a lot of money, right? So, um, the idea right now is to get a streamlined approach to this so that we can not raise taxes and keep everybody happy. It's tough.
I think streamlining expenses.
Yeah, like, try to get a hold of them, because right now, as Andy pointed out, if the salaries continue to climb the way they have, we will be in the red next year. We won't have the funds returned.
My experience in, in the Ford's world, being an employee, insurance costs went ballistic, and the owner of the company had a meeting and said, I've paid for your family's medicals. I can't, I will pay for the employee, but I can't, you'll have to pay for your spouse and your kids. And nobody liked it. They didn't like it a whole lot. And then he also didn't give automatic raises. You had to perform to get a raise, and he set a limit on them, to just say, everybody want, everybody, I mean, tell me. I'd have loved it every year, he said, okay, you made a percentage, you're great.
I, I agree, my employees.
Or you got a bonus on the, the out-town compulsion that you did, that was, you know, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. That, that went through the company, didn't go to me.
If, if the company's not performing, you can't give raises. You can't just, you can't just give raises to give raises if the company's not performing, like, you can't give them. And I think we've, I think we've found an end to that. The company doesn't perform, you don't draw money. And if my employees ask me for a raise and I haven't performed, if I haven't made money, there's nothing I can do about it.
Well, I appreciate that.
So we're given, I think.
Except for giving some automatic raises.
That's why I think so, too. I think we need to get to the bottom of it so we don't have to raise taxes, is what I'm saying. I agree with you.
I just don't, I mean.
Okay, like, can we move on, please? Sharon?
Sharon McKnight, 62 Miller Lane. This feedback, going back and forth, is just brilliant. You've got some wonderful, brilliant financial people in the community. And when you have your, um, your, your special meeting on the finances, I mean, it would be so helpful, I think, if you allow public input. I mean, to me, that's where the input should be, not right before a first reading. I mean, in my opinion, I mean, I just love hearing this, but we don't get to put it in until you're going to have a first reading. So sometimes we just don't feel like we're heard. So if, if, if you could change that process, I think that would help a lot. And have the meetings where more people can attend, like, at 6:00 PM or after during the week. I mean, at 9:00 AM in the morning during the weekday, most people are working. So we, we can't show up. We want to understand this. I appreciate, Matt, that you are video recording that meeting, because I did listen to that meeting so I can have a better understanding of all this. But unfortunately, when people's mics aren't on, we can't hear you. I mean, and you guys had some really good, thoughtful questions, but I couldn't hear some of them. So, um, I'm going to take the time to ask them now, and so hopefully I can get.
Just to let everybody know, if that does happen on YouTube, if you click the CC at the bottom, it actually.
I do, I do, I know how to do that.
Yeah, to be a little bit figured that out.
I even know how to do a transcript. And thank you for not making it just for kids, because you can't do that. You have to make it not for kids. And you can even put that on a playlist. So, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. So I'm going to ask my questions now, and if you guys address them, I'm sorry, I did not hear it, and I didn't have time to really give it the research. On the street resurfacing revenue, where, where are the revenue and expenses related to Duke Energy's street resurfacing program listed for the fiscal year 2425 amended and a fiscal year 2526 proposed budget? I mean, it would be nice to see how much is coming in and how much is going out each year for this program. Is that anywhere, and I just have not seen it?
No, it's in our, it's in the more detailed but, uh, revenues line, but this is the first year to get the analysis on that.
Do we have access to that, Matt?
I can get it for you.
I mean, are you going to put it online with the rest of your documents?
Hmm, I can do that.
Thank you. Okay, okay, so the answer's in there, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, the budget variances, okay? The original fiscal year 2425 available revenue budget was $3 million different than the updated amended fiscal year 2425 available revenue budget? What accounted for this significant difference? A $1.3 million loan difference in just the carryover original amended fiscal year 2425 to the updated amended fiscal year 2425? I mean, what's going, going on behind these numbers? These are simple dollar and percent variances from budget to budget. What would cause a single line variance to be $1.3 million off?
Where, where are you looking at them?
Oh, God. I had to put it in an Excel sheet. I can show it to you after the meeting, but you have, um, and I think one of you did bring it up at the meeting, that you have a minus from the available revenue budget. You have the original, this is the original fiscal year 2425. This is the only time I'm going to bring up the original, which you didn't have. I went and pulled that out. The original 2425 that was voted on was $3 million different than the updated amended fiscal year 2425 available revenue budget. So what accounted for that difference in a $1.3 million loan difference in just the carryover original amended fiscal year 2425 to the updated 2425? We just got that, so I, I was wondering, what is, what is that $1.3 million loan difference? Do you know, I mean, are you allowed to?
The only thing that I would guess is it's a difference in how much was originally planned for transfers in and how much is.
I mean, the transfers reduced for the amended, so that's probably.
That I would see, but I.
Okay, I mean, because I have my Excel sheet. I mean, I mean, that's a big difference, and I, I could not find the answer on that anywhere, so let me move on. Okay. The CBD fund deficit. I mean, a fund is like a checkbook, right? Why isn't Central Business District Fund running a deficit year after year? I mean, fiscal year 24, 245,708,000 minus, and now projected at 623,415 in the proposed fiscal year 2526. I mean, what's the plan to fix this? I mean, if this is my checkbook, I would never carry it for such a debt, year after year after year, let, let it get bigger. How are you guys going to fix that? Why don't you just, if you have a surplus, like you're saying, why don't you just fix it? I'm just curious.
I agree with you, Sharon, that's one thing I'm talking to the auditor about. I'm not sure why we haven't done that. I mean, it's just, we, for some reason, the fund balance, I mean, it's not.
I, I mean, I just.
It annoys me.
I'm just forward.
I'm not sure, yeah. I mean, you should see it's been year after year.
Okay.
I think that's also an issue of transfer in and out. It's not the, I don't think that's the actual budget.
Correct, it's just a fund.
Yeah, it was labeled.
And that's one fund that I'm trying to get rid of, because it's just, it doesn't need to be, it needs to, like, that's one of the ones we talked about, that, that, that fund was specifically created for a purpose it no longer serves.
Yeah. There was a couple of them like that, and that CBD is one of them. Yeah. So it just, it just labeled, we, we've been talking about this for years, it just labeled incorrectly. Now with the new software, all that's going to be changed.
Um, also, does this new software, well, I'm sure it has some glitches, but when we was running your numbers through, um, some AI stuff to help us understand this, since we got this information and since short notice, and we're trying to play catch-up, did you notice that the crossed-out amounts still showed up in your new system? You know, like, where you had 19 million, and then you had the amended, and it was 19 million, but then you scratched it out and it was 17 million. Does your system catch the lineup?
It's not what's doing.
I mean, does it hit errors like that, or did you notice any kind of errors like that with the lines crossed out not being recognized?
Sharon, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really sure what you're talking about.
Okay, well.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, I have it all on my thing.
Usually, I mean, if it's an ordinance, if it's crossed out, that means that.
It was adjusted, it was an amended amount. Let's say from your, your amended fiscal year 2425, and then your updated amended 2425, you had that scratched out, brought it down, 17 million.
Yeah, anytime it's crossed out, that means it's being replaced by whatever is underlined.
I understand that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But your new system, your auditing system that I take it that you're working with, do you find errors with it not catching that scratch out? And you manually have to put that amount, correct amount in, or do you run it through with the scratch out in it? I mean, because there's some errors.
The scratch out is just the adjustments.
Yeah, I understand that, but you don't run it through your audit software like that?
No.
Okay, there you go. Okay, so let's see, we covered this. Oh, the audit status. Okay. There was a lot of confusion during the May 19 City Council meeting about whether the fiscal year 2324 audit was complete. I filed up with the Department of Local Government, and they confirmed it was has not been completed. The city requested a nine-month extension, pushing the deadline to December 1. Would the missing audit help explain some of the inconsistencies we're seeing in the budget? And, um, and is the city missing out and have any state funding due to this extension?
So, yes, the, the, we did file the extension. Uh, it will be the budget, or the, sorry, the audit will be done by the end of this month.
Oh, by the end of this month?
We don't lose out any funding, they just hold our mutual aid fund until it's complete.
What's a mutual aid fund?
So that's a calculation from the state of, um, a certain amount that we get from the state to put towards roads.
Okay, so that's additional road money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you have, you have that.
They won't lose it, they just won't issue it to us until it's done.
Is this in your more detailed stuff that we don't have, the community, this mutual aid funding?
No, it's, it's in the, it's in the ordinance as a fund. It's actually an expense under the streets fund.
Okay. I'm just, okay, so, so the mutual aid fund, do you have the amount?
It's called MARF.
It's called MARF.
MARF, yeah, I mean, if you ever hear that, that's right.
I'm asking you for the amount, if you have it.
What date is our normal audit due on?
Um, May 1st, 2025. June 30, I mean, March, sorry, March, 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 2025. But you can file for an extension.
Yeah, it's 310,000 is what we're expecting issued.
Oh, that's a lot of money.
It always varies, but that's, we got 330 last year.
Okay, and so I know you got Linda Chapman in there helping you, and you got a new auditor. Has the council members been updated on findings, the interim data, and all that on the audit?
Audit, they haven't, I haven't seen it yet either.
Really?
It's not until the end of the month.
I mean, don't you have data you got to give them?
Don't we have what?
Data, you have to give them, they audit. And so, has any of the council members seen that data to see where, if there's any?
No, it's, yeah.
Oh, okay, well, I, you know, some, a lot of companies do. But that's how you keep your money healthy, if you have data that you look in, oh, that's every three months. Just make sure everything stays healthy, everything's lining up, and then you go on. I mean, that's what I'm talking about, interim data, that's just looking into it, just to be smart about your finances. Okay, um, that you do it. Thank you for your time.
If we can get with me, we'll.
I will. And I'll show you my Excel sheet, what I'm talking about. Okay, thank you, Matt, appreciate your time.
All right, Patty Huddapole. Thank you. Elizabeth Allegrini.
Elizabeth Allegrini, 45 Lockwood Place. I just have a couple of points. From the records that I've acquired, um, the fiscal year 2324, there was an 8% increase across the board for employees. 2425 fiscal year, there's a 6%. We're proposing now 2526 a 4%. So that's an 18% increase over three years. And I'm not sure how many people in the room on the board. I know we have a lot of self-employed people, which is great. Hope you've been able to give your employees an 18% raise. able to give your employees an 18% raise over the past three years. I'm sure they're loving working for you. But so I just think that it goes along with that fiscal responsibility. And then also, I've noticed that the, we used to receive a pay ordinance that specifically listed the employees, I don't recall if it was the employee's name, but it listed the employee's position, and then it specifically listed the employee's pay. That is public information. I believe, you know, it's not available now, but, you know, I know we do have the pay and classification plan, but that just gives a range for each employee. So I'm not sure why we, the pay ordinance was removed.
I've never known it, I mean, the pay ordinance is a range of, for each position by CARES. That's what is done. I've never, I didn't know that they do a.
Yeah, there used to be a pay, a pay ordinance.
Okay, I'll have to look at that.
Listed each.
Everybody's salary.
Everybody's salary, since that is public information and it's being funded by our tax dollars. And then my next question, I guess, is, you mentioned the audit's going to be finished by the end of this month. Is there a date set for the public hearing on the audit?
Not yet, not till it's here. Then we'll get with council and have that set up.
What will be the timeframe?
July is, July is the target, is what, we're hoping to have it.
And then lastly, I'd like to thank the council for voting to do the audit of the pension fund issue. I truly believe you guys have to be good sorts of the taxpayers' money. And by voting for that, hopefully we will get to the bottom of this. And I agree, if letters were ignored that were sent by the state, that, you know, that costs money. If that could have been nipped in the bud, we could have addressed the issue sooner rather than later and let those payments balloon along with the fine. So thank you all for voting for that.
All right. We'll close the hearing for the budget. We will go ahead and open our regular meeting now. Melissa, we do a roll call.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Here.
Mr. Pendry?
Here.
Mr. Ellison?
Here.
Mr. Beazold?
Here.
Mr. Blau?
Here.
Mr. Strange?